All right, ladies and gentlemen, if y'all would come to order. We're going to begin this commission meeting for April 20th. We're going to let Commissioner Davis preside. All right?
Good morning, everyone. First, we're going to stand and we'll let Commissioner Rowland do the prayer and do a moment of silence.
Okay. Do our moment of silence for our longtime county administrator Yale King, which passed away last week. And also, we lost Coach Dan Pitts last night. So, we just found out about that today. We'll do a moment of silence for them and a prayer. You know, thank you for today. We thank you for this group of people who've come here to do the businesses in this county. Lord, our hearts are heavy with the loss of Yale King and Coach Dan Pitts. And what we ask you to be with their families as they go through this ordeal. We're just so thankful that we're here to do so much for our county and our community. And we're so blessed to have them for a short time. We're asking you to bless the rest of our day and bless our meeting and send us out to be fruitful in your world. In Jesus' name we pray. I'm here.
Amen.
Thanks, ladies and gentlemen. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we'll approve of the agenda. What's the plan, Mr. Board?
I don't think we have any additions or...
Well, let me back up. Let me back up. We've got a couple of changes. I'm sorry. The exact session we've had at the beginning, we're going to move it to the end. And, um...
Okay.
Item C, we'll have to go into a public hearing. Item E, we're going to stretch that off and talk about discretionary funds for going to Commissioner Rowland.
Scratch and not an E?
E, yeah, just put discretionary funds right there. Commissioner Rowland.
How much did the approval of those changes?
Second.
The motion by one, second. The motion by Commissioner Ammoni and the second by Commissioner Rowland, the agenda being approved. What's the plan, Mr. Board? I mean, we're ready for the question.
All in favor?
At this time, we do approve of minutes of the March 16th meeting, March 20th meeting, and April 6th meeting.
I make the motion approved in all days. Change.
The motion by Commissioner Ambrose and second by Commissioner Ammoni that minutes be approved for March 16th, March 30th, April 6th. Ready for a question? All in favor? Moving right along. At this time, entertain a motion to go into a public hearing about Marin County Hazard Mitigation Plan.
So moved.
The motion by Commissioner Rowland and the second by Commissioner Ammoni that we go into a public hearing to discuss the Marin County Hazard Mitigation Plan. All in favor?
Thank you for attending the Monroe County Hazard Mitigation Plan Public Hearing.
You might want to hold it in a pipe.
Okay.
You've got to get real close to it.
This is our agenda. We'll talk about the project budget, elements of the planning process, the hazards that are identified. Public have a public comment period and then an assurance. Hazard mitigation plan is a locally adopted plan for reducing loss of life, property, and economic hardship from a disaster or hazard, and is required by Federal Disaster Mitigation Act. Plan must be updated every five years, and we're at the point now where we're beginning to update the plan with the help of Monroe County's Fire Chief and EMA Director and stakeholders within the community. Current plan was approved by FEMA in 2017 and expires in 2022. There is a cost associated, and the local share is $3,000, and the total approved cost is $20,000. As you can see, the project's budget is there on the screen. Elements of a hazard mitigation plan include identification of hazards and their frequency, deevaluate the threat or the risk level, assess the vulnerability of the community, and have an analysis of impacts. Also, we develop goals and objectives to reduce or mitigate the risks associated, and we also have public engagement that's primarily focused on these risks and developing the goals and objectives. So far, timeline and the planning process to date, we've had monthly stakeholder meetings that began in November, 2020, and we'll have a review session in 2021 of the goals that have been developed thus far. Initial drafts of all goals and objectives have been identified so far, and we are currently drafting narratives and the plan for the plan and the appendices. So, the hazard mitigation plan process, what is next? There'll be a second public hearing that'll be scheduled once the draft of the update has been completed. The draft of the hazard mitigation plan will be then sent to GMA and FEMA by June 30th, and the plan will then be locally adopted after FEMA and GMA provide their feedback, and then we make any corrections that need to be made. And then Monroe County and the municipalities will implement the plan and monitor the progress. This is ongoing after local adoption and FEMA approval. So thus far, the hazards that have been identified for the updated plan are flooding, tornadoes, thunderstorms, drought, lightning, winter storms, hazmat incidents, terroristic threats, and endemic and communicable diseases. The last three are new to the plan. So, if I could start the public comments period, if anyone has any questions or public comments or anything you would like to add at this point. If not, I'd like to ask the chair if he would like to adjourn the public comments period. And my, although it's very small, my information is on the screen, and I have some business cards. So after today, if anyone has any information or anything they would like to add, please feel free to email or call.
At this time, I'd like to get, what's the plan, Mr. Board, to adjourn this public hearing, go back to our regular session. The motion to go on public hearing. The motion by Commissioner Ambrose and second by Commissioner Ammoni that we come out of this public hearing and go back to our regular board meeting. Any discussion?
What's this, what's our cost for this?
Three thousand.
Three thousand.
Three thousand.
Yep.
And this is yearly, too?
Is it yearly?
Every five years.
Every five years?
Yeah. And so that's three thousand?
And if we don't join in, if we can't claim any funds for damages, correct?
It's not necessarily damages, it's more on the grant funding. So, for example, if you were to apply for GMA funding or FEMA funding for generators or various other things, if it's not in this plan and you don't have a locally adopted plan, that is not eligible to receive funding from that agency.
My motion would approve.
Second.
The motion by Commissioner Ambrose and second by Commissioner Ammoni that we approve the, I guess, approve the $3,000 every five years for the Marin County Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Just for note, that $3,000 could be met by labor mat. So, all of the meetings that we've been having, we're documenting labor mat. And so that's primarily what our goal is, is there doesn't have to be any cash mat. It can all be volunteer hours.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Any more?
It looks like you're much in favor to come out of...
We did.
Can we approve that?
Yeah.
And then, this is a once per five years, so it'll have to come back up. We're approving $3,000 for this five-year period, right? Yes, that was a motion, John. Correct. Okay.
All in favor? At this time, Ms. F., I skipped the row call, if you would.
Okay. Mr. Ambrose?
Here.
Mr. Davis?
Here.
Mr. Mobbie?
Here.
Mr. Rowland?
Here.
Chairman Taffley is not present.
Thank you. At this time, we're going to move on to try to do what's tax refund from Miss Marjorie Baker Green, turn over to our county manager, Mr. Hedges.
From time to time, we receive requests from our property owners for a tax refund. One was received from this Marjorie Baker Green, who petitioned the tax commissioner for a $50.79 refund for property tax penalty and interest. The claim is that she did not receive the original tax bill and that it was mailed to the wrong address. Tax Commissioner Lori Andrews recommends to the board and agrees with the refund. Attorney Ben Vaughn opines that the original tax bill was mailed to the property at 101 Oakwood Drive. Ms. Green stated to Ms. Andrews that she did not receive the bill. Ms. Andrews' reasoning for granting the refund here was that Ms. Green came in prior to the due date and paid numerous property tax bills. Ms. Andrews believes that Ms. Green would have paid this one if she hadn't received it. This was Ms. Andrews' basis for recommending the refund and the different circumstances from normal requests for a refund after purchasing the property. Mr. Vaughn understands this logic and sympathizes with Ms. Green, that every property owner knows that they owe property taxes each year on the properties, and the due date is highly publicized. In his opinion of Attorney Vaughn, Ms. Green was under a duty after purchasing the property to investigate and be sure that the tax bill was paid. Therefore, in the opinion of Attorney Vaughn, this refund request should be denied. Mr. Vice Chairman?
At this time, what's the plan, Mr. Board?
My motion would approve. Don't pay the refund. We'd like to go into discussion.
Second. The motion by Commissioner Ambrose and second by Commissioner Rowland that we deny the refund to Ms. Green, at this time, any discussion?
Yes, sir. I'd like to add to this. Over the years, I've had many of them down in my district pay $800, $900 for this exact same thing, buy 100 acres of house, and they buy it sometime between April and July. It takes about eight months to make the circuit to go through when they get it recorded at the court, to come to the tax digest office by time it makes its loop down to Lori Andrews. So, bill for that year goes to the original address of the property, and we've turned these down and passed for as much as $1,200, $1,400 because, just like our attorney, Ben Vaughn said, they know they got to pay it, they got to chase it down. That's something that when they close, these attorneys ought to tell them, these closing attorneys, that it's not automatic, even with computerized world, you don't punch it in the courthouse, it comes out of Lori's office. So, that's something that if they tell them in the closing, they can afford this in the future, but we can't give this money back because we did, I've got about seven or eight of them that we've turned down for the same thing, better up than $100.
And I'll say, and I'm sure your approval, virtually every buzzer that I get to turn makes that same. I don't need to follow that amount, so.
Most of the time, the previous seller will afford the tax bill, but courtesy, but sometimes they don't, and it doesn't alleviate your obligation to pay it, unfortunately. It's a little, it's harder to turn somebody down over $50 request, but when these are $3,000 or $4,000 requests, you start thinking about the ramifications. So, I'm in agreement.
We've got a motion, this motion by Commissioner Ambrose and second by Commissioner Rowland that we deny this claim of Ms. Green on. Call the question. All in favor? Motion denied. Moving on to item E. At this time, turn over to Commissioner Rowland to talk about discretionary funds.
Yeah, I'd like to have board approve up to $15,000 of my discretionary funds for a, for the city of Deloan to rehab and revamp a ball field and community park that they have there. This is kind of a collaborative effort. They are, the whole project is going to be approximately $30,000, and they are going to come up with half of it out of their funds, and we're going to come up with the other half out of my discretionary funds, up to $15,000. It'll be a big deal there for the city of Deloan.
I make motion approve, that's good use of your money.
The motion by Commissioner Ambrose and second by Commissioner Rowland that $15,000 of Commissioner Rowland discretionary funds go to the city of Deloan for rehabbing of their playing ball fields and community center. Any more discussion on this? Call the question. All in favor? Moving right along. At this time, move to I F., talk about corporate software, turn it back over to our county manager, Hedges.
Thank you very much. I'd like to recognize we have our new Superior Court clerk with us, Ms. Lindsay Taylor. She's here for support as I present this recommendation on her behalf. Currently, the court uses a software program called MicroPact. It is one of the leading providers of case management and licensing software, federal, state, local, and commercial customers. The software is proprietary. It cannot be purchased, and it can only be leased. It's outdated, it's not very user-friendly, and it's not an integrated program. As I was thinking about this, I go back to my days of using Lotus 123, which was replaced by Microsoft Office, and those that use Office know that it's integrated across PowerPoint, Word, and some other programs there. What we're looking to do is to swap out this software with a company called Icon. They provide case management software for Superior Civil Judicial Courts. It has case docketing, reporting, and document management, case searching, scheduling of case events. It creates notice in court calendars. It has seen notifications of parties that are part of the case. Most importantly, it's cloud-based, which means that the old server that we have, we don't need to replace it, which would cost about $8,500. This software also provides jury management with selection, processing from selection all the way through the summons. It maintains the jury pool, selects jurors for service, it prints the summonses, questionnaires, and other notices. It processes attendance and no-shows, defer, transfer, and panel or excuse jurors, and it's cloud-based as well. The Icon software is fully integrated for case management and jury management. Access via web, read-only for lawyers, judges, district attorneys, public defenders, and sheriffs. Right now, they're calling into the office of the clerk requesting information through telephone calls, emails, on a daily basis. The general public would also have access, and if they wanted to print documents that they can see, which are read-only, there would be a small fee that would benefit the county. Overall, it is the opinion of the clerk of the court that this will help reduce the backlog and the district attorney also agrees. This software is also proprietary. It cannot be purchased, it can only be leased. The lease for Icon is the same as MicroPact, which is $950 per month. There is a one-time fee to set this software up, provide training, converting all of the existing information in the existing software package, and a one-time fee is $10,000. The clerk of the Superior Court recommends and requests approval from board commissioners to convert to Icon. Mr. Vice Chairman?
At this time, I'm asking the chairman to be able to come in some day.
I really don't. I think the biggest thing is that you do have to replace the server that we're on now and go into the iCloud or the cloud base. You're not going to have to continue to pay that $8,500 to $10,000 for new servers. So, we're going to get it in the one-time conversion, and you don't have to look at replacing it ever again. I think that's going to be the biggest thing. It's going to make my office a lot more efficient. We'll be able to defile several more things that is beneficial for the public defender, the DA's office, and our office to work together. Lamar County and Bucks County are actually on Icon, so we would all be, our circuit would be one unit. We would all be on the same case management, and I think that would be huge.
What's the plan, Mr. Board? Is that $950 a month, that's to cover all DA all, that's not $950 for each office?
No, that's $950 for our monthly service for Icon, for our office, but as far as being able to have the website or have the DA's office public defender, you can set up a subscription for that, and that is included in all of that, so that would be available for free for them.
Is there a contract, how long they keep this process? Is this part of that Icon down on Bass Road?
No. This is based out of Swan.
If the judge wants it, and it helps do your job.
We've got a lot of choice.
If it'll make your job easier, I'd have, I'm for it.
Can I ask something kind of, this has nothing to do with, I mean, this is only just case software, it has nothing to do with like scanning a flat or anything? You not talked about that?
We have, so, no, that's actually with CodeFile.
Okay.
And we have, the clerk's authority has gone through and scanned the flats, so that should be available soon on the clerk's authority website.
Oh.
Yes.
Dating all the way back to whatever it was?
They had a historical project, and they actually went back and scanned all the flats. So, we're waiting, it's in their vault, so we're waiting on them to release that.
Okay.
But that is actually with CodeFile and our real estate, but CodeFile and Icon actually work together. They're very good at working together.
Any idea what that'll be? A lot of other counties have gotten ahead of us on that, and, you know, if you're searching for a flat, it only goes back right now until a certain date, and then you have to come in. Anyways, all right. If we needed some discretionary funds for that, I might be...
I think, I think our Commissioner Rowland will make a comment that y'all are going to get the next 10 cases, get them up to about $1,200 base, they'll offset the funding. Right, right, and then...
Judge is a laugh.
So, what's the plan, Mr. Board?
I'm...
My motion would approve.
Second.
The motion by Commissioner Ambrose and second by Commissioner Ammoni that we approve the fund grade for the corporate software, and the one-time fee of $10,000 is coming from the contingency fund. Any more discussion? I call the question. All in favor? Next on the agenda is item G's mini excavator purchase. Turn it over to our county manager, Mr. Hedges, at this time.
You know, from time to time, I love to put up photographs and...
I won't know if you had a picture.
I didn't put it in your pack, did I? Here it is. Can you believe this? I'm recommending a John Deere. I thought I'd never see the day. It was a time. What we're looking at is a John Deere G3 Mini Escavator. Some specs on this, it's 23 horsepower MR engine with same transmission. It can go down 9.2 feet. This machine weighs 7,200 pounds, and it can be loaded and unloaded onto existing trailers towed by Ford F-250. And it's rare, but this is a team recommendation, beginning with Junior Watts of Public Works. He can use this machine to maintain waterway easements where bigger equipment cannot access that area, cleaning out of driveway culverts. It's ideal for getting into difficult areas like beaver dams, and he believes it has unlimited uses. Ray White, building maintenance, he can use this machine for installing water and electrical lines, digging up busted pipes, digging up set tank lids, and setting up slabs, cleaning out small drains and ditches that are in small area. Frank Newton out at the landfill, very much in favor. He can use this where bigger machines cannot be used, especially around the old HA tank, around the wet well, and around the monitoring wells. Jeff Duro of our water department already has a mini excavator, but with two in our inventory, primarily if we're installing new water lines throughout the Juliet project, he can have two machines working at the same time, getting a lot more installations and faster. We did do some bits, and John Deere came in at $39,565, above the machine somewhere, was $42,194. Junior almost fell over, and we found out the cantilever was $52,459. The recommendation from the team is to purchase the John Deere at the price of $39,565. This would come from Public Works 2020 squash funds. Mr. Vice Chairman?
At this time, I'm going to ask our road superintendent, Mr. Watts, here at 9:30. Okay, what's the plan, Mr. Board?
I make motion approve.
Second, for discussion.
The motion by Commissioner Ambrose that we approve this new mini excavator and second by Commissioner Rowland for discussion. At this time, discussion.
Got a couple of questions. Says on warranty, standard warranty, two years, $2,000 premier coverage. What is premier coverage?
Yes, sir. My name's Kerry Glass, I'm one equipment. Premier basically means total machine coverage.
Bumper to bumper?
Bumper to bumpers, yeah.
And the next one says CSA 125500. What is...
Not exactly sure what you're...
You want to look at this real quick?
Yes, sir. It's got...
Because it evidently has something to do with warranty.
Well, it also has a five-year, 4,000-hour powertrain hydraulic warranty.
I mean, right below the...
Yes, that is, yeah. It's, so basically, it's two-year, $2,000 total, five-year, 4,000 powertrain hydraulic, which really on that machine is basically just about everything, the engine and all the hydraulics.
Okay. I'll ask you one more question.
Yes, sir.
It is, most of the mechanics are Yanmar?
The engine is Yanmar, everything else is Deere. And we service the Yanmar, they just build those for us.
So, we're confident they're going to get more?
Oh, absolutely. Yes, sir. Absolutely. Yes, sir.
How about if we spill our beer on the electronic equipment? Is that, does that cover?
I'll go so far as to say yes, that would be covered.
Man, y'all need a whiskey. Yo, come on, Al.
It does have sealed switches, so you are good.
Okay.
Crack the beer. If you had enough for Junior to get and need a beer, which I think you probably do sometimes.
That's great.
Thank you.
I think that with all the water prices we're putting in, I get the calls every day, this water has been tested, pressurized, ready to go, and hold up now is good meters, get them installed. So, if this could be used for Jeff and them getting some of this stuff done, I'd have a lot less calls, because a big backhoe is part of those yards up.
We rented one of those for two days for $1,000 at the middle of there and replaced a ton of sewage line and supply water supply line. But, I mean, if they rent for a grand, you know, I mean, I think $38,000 bucks, we're going to get a lot of use out of that for that price.
Get a picture of Junior smiling and placing it. Can you put that on the back up?
They're very effective in tight places. You get a lot of...
See, and if you get that for Junior, he might actually crack a smile.
I won't guarantee that. But he might be mean looking, but he does one outstanding job with our Road Department. I got to compliment him on that. Here, here.
All right, what's the pleasure of the board?
You'll call a question?
All right, yeah. We are discussing right now. Call a question. All in favor of purchasing? All right.
It has a smile, Junior. Just let me get a picture of it.
At this time, we're moving to open, talk about items of the twenty-twenty-two T-Splash project. Turn it back over to our County Manager, Jim Hedges, and our Road Superintendent. Through your mind.
We've been through this before. T-Splash is that special purpose local option sales tax to fund outlay projects proposed by the county government and municipal governments where the projects consist of transportation purposes only. It is a one-cent additional sales tax. It's valid for five years. L-Meck remains at the thirty percent match. However, T-Splash funds can be used for that match. If approved in November of this year, the effective date would be April one of twenty-twenty-two. T-Splash collected in Monroe County would stay in Monroe County. This is a single-county splash referendum that we've been working on. Ninety-six of the one-hundred-and-fifty-nine counties have T-Splash. Sixty-two are regional. Thirty-four are single-county T-Splash and one county has both single and regional T-Splash. It's estimated that a five-year T-Splash would bring in fourteen million dollars to the county. Coupled with L-Meck grants and our match, you're looking at nineteen million dollars over the five-year period. And throw in twenty-twenty splash, twenty-three and a half million dollars could be spent on roads. There's about six different uses for T-Splash. Acquisition of right-of-ways for roads, streets, bridges, sidewalks and bicycle paths. Construction of roads, streets, bridges, sidewalks and bicycle paths. The renovation and improvement of roads, streets, bridges, sidewalks and bicycle paths, including resurfacing. And I've highlighted this in red because that is the scope of work in Monroe County. The renovation and improvement of our roads, which will be entirely resurfacing. Other uses, relocation of utilities, improvement of surface water drainage, patching, leveling, milling, widening, shoulder preparation, cove repair and other repairs. The twenty-twenty-two splash, let me repeat this. The funds collected will be used for renovation and resurfacing of county roads. I've heard it said in social media, we don't know what this T-Splash will be used for. It will be used to resurface and renovate county roads. The funding of twenty-three and a half million dollars would enable us over five years to resurface between one-hundred-and-fifty to one-hundred-and-seventy-five miles. What we're using as our project list, this is the first kick at the can, if you will. Going back to our twenty-twenty road evaluation and we will, Junior has that right now. And you'll recall, we labeled them one through four, one being the worst. He is reviewing that list and I'm quite confident that several of the roads that were lower down in the ranking are going to move up because we've not been able to do a lot of road resurfacing work for lack of funds. On the eighteenth of May, just a month or so away, we will be bringing forward the final list for approval. You know, there's a timeline on this that we then have to have a joint meeting with municipalities. We have to put together an intergovernmental agency agreement. The end result will be an election on November the second. So if there's any questions or discussions, we'd be glad to intervent with. Will I discuss party?
Yes, we'll discuss, we'll discuss.
Yeah, I was going to say something. Right now, we don't have funds to do anything. And in this past month, just this past month, the DOT, I'm sort of, I won't even say it, but I've got two roads in my district that I've been patrolling at night, four, five, six o'clock at night, two o'clock at night. These damn asphalt trucks have done over four-hundred thousand dollars worth of damage to Rumble Road and Jenkins Road. Just two roads in my district. And if you guys go up and look at yours, they go to work at night and they're cutting down these roads they're not supposed to be on. And they're going down full loads where they grind that stuff up on the highway, take over the mills and then come back loads of it. And they just tore the road slap up. Junior's had the resurfaced bunch out there three or four times in Rumble Road. As soon as they get done after that next night, just tore it up. Now where are we going to get money fixing these? The list we've got, my two roads are great, but those two roads are shot. I agree that we need to have some kind of definition of where we're going to do it at. We can't just go by the one, two, three and four's pavement because these emergencies come up. I hate to see, when you go around Box Ankle, they're going to pavement up there, down there, forty-two hundred side streets. They're supposed to stay on state roads and they're not. We've had, I've had the Sheriff Department have to catch and write the tickets. Unfortunately, I wanted to impound one of them. If you impound one of those asphalt trucks, will load asphalt, let it sit for about eight hours somewhere, that truck ain't no good. And that would get their attention. Give them tickets, warrant, have them do a bit of good. And this T-Splash is the only way we're going to come in and get this taken care of. We're going to have to raise the taxes this year. And because we've got to have some funds to fix these roads that fall apart. But we're not trying to scare anybody in that fact because it's going to happen. Then if T-Splash passes, which I hope it does, then the next time we can lower that millage rate back down. Let that T-Splash take it. We've got to have some funds.
Good. And we can back on what John said. I was on Rumble Road Saturday morning by eight o'clock and I seen two flying down there. And I questioned that also, and also about raising the taxes this year. Our County Manager, let me know if more, it's in our resolution that we will roll the tax back next year if this T-Splash passes, so.
And I like this T-Splash, let's pay it up down freeway. You wouldn't believe how much money they spend in our county. Prime examples, our County Manager, would you explain to them on that, where's that purple one? Over where Zach's is, we gave them that money for doing little shopping. Listen to this.
They're bringing in about eight hundred thousand dollars a month.
In taxes. That's that.
And with sales, you get a penny off of that.
And that's how they make our payment back. It's just astronomical how much the first payment was.
The Mose and the local challenges, their revenues are eight hundred thousand a month?
So you made a loan.
Two hundred thousand.
We made a loan. We have to pay it back until we get their tax information to know how much to pay back to the developer for.
And if you go over and look, I mean, those tags are out county and out state. That would be our property owners trying to pay this tax.
I wasn't here at the last meeting, so I'll briefly just put my two cents in on this. But first of all, I'm for the T-Splats because I think that, you know, not just government, but companies, you know, when you have executives trying to manage the bottom line and produce a shareholder return, when they become short-sighted, there are places in the balance sheet where they can start to tax the future. Okay? If, I worked for a big trucking company and one time it was a, part of the business was transporting hazardous materials. And they were owned by a capital, what do you call it?
Investment group?
An investment company out of New York that knew nothing about this re-refine oil business. Y'all bear with me and I'll explain why I'm coming back around, come back down to. The only thing I've ever done besides real estate, for two years I went to work for this company and, you know, it was interesting to me how, you know, we were running with trucks that were carrying hazardous waste that had over a million miles on them. But the numbers looked great. The bookkeeping looked great. There was capital expenses that were not being reinvested into the business. And anytime you own, anytime you operate a business, there's a real number that that business costs you per month. And the easiest thing to tax is the stuff that you don't notice in less than a year if you don't do it. Well, this board is almost entirely new at this point in the last six or seven years, I think. And I'm here to tell you that, and I'm not trying to throw stones or anything, but I'm here to tell you that we've all of a sudden realized that we are twenty million dollars behind on our roads in this county. And again, you don't get twenty million dollars behind on any capital projects without deferring and doing other things. And so it doesn't happen overnight, but my point is that this board has decided, we are trying to, we want to stop that. We want to begin investing an adequate amount of money in our roads. Because if you think they're bad now, now, given another ten years, where myself and some of the other members of the board differ is I'm not in favor of a millage hike. I feel like we need to find the money within and we need to, whether that's cutting budgets, cutting other services. Right now, this county is being funded disproportionately by people that have a house on a one-acre lot. There are people that are enjoying, I'm not against the COVA, but the state created this COVA program. And if you're under a COVA, you're benefiting disproportionately in this county. And I've got plenty of friends that are under the COVA. I'm not fussing about that. It is a state law. It's perfectly fine. But there are people that have houses on one and two acre lots in this county that are paying the lion's share of the taxes. I live in a neighborhood that every time a house sells, we have to pay a half percentage point. Somebody does, the buyer or the seller, and it goes towards repaving the roads in our neighborhood. Okay? So I'm already paying to repave my roads in my neighborhood separately as a part of that tax inside the neighborhood, and that's okay. I agreed to do that. But the fact is that if we go and raise the millage rate, you know, it's an additional amount. It's disproportionately falling on people that live in Riotta subdivision, River Forest subdivision, Manor at Mop Hiller. I mean, I could list neighborhoods for days. Adamsville Park, Oakwood and Adamsville. Those are the people in this county that are paying the lion's share of the taxes. Meanwhile, there's folks that have properties that are four hundred thousand dollars worth of land that are selling for four hundred thousand dollars worth of land. And their payment on their taxes is like seven hundred bucks a year. That's not right. Don't get me wrong. I'm not saying the COVA is a bad thing and I know there's plenty of people enjoying that program. But when we hike the millage rate, it is disproportionately going to fall on the people that, where the, and look, the tax assessors, they're out there. I mean, it's so much easier to go and hit ten houses in a neighborhood and reassess and look for finished basements and this, that and the other than it is to go find a country farmhouse on fifty acres. You know, and so, I mean, to me, I'm just, I feel like we have an adequate millage rate. I'm going to say this, and then I'm going to get back in line and follow the, you know, do what we need to do. Because I agree with the commissioners. We have a problem funding our roads. The question is, where do those funds now come from? You know, where do we get those, where do we get the funds to pay for that? And in my opinion, I'm sorry, but you know, Jim mentioned some other programs and some other things that we're paying for. My opinion is we need to look at those things and say, okay, you know, if the county, for example, if the county passes, decides they do not want this T-Splash again, then in my opinion, the roads just need to continue to suffer. That's the constituent saying either the roads need to suffer or, on the other hand, maybe we don't need all these services. Maybe we do need to look at tearing down the library. Maybe we do need to do some, you know, give a twenty-five percent cut to every department and make the departments figure out where they're going to come up with the funds. That's not fun. You know, employees end up hating commissioners and county managers for making those kinds of decisions. You know, and I'm sorry, but I'm prepared to be hated if that's the case. But I do not, I do not think we need a millage hike. And to say that we need one and to promise to roll it back, I don't know that I'll be here when they roll it back. You may not be here. You and I are both up in twenty-two. What happens if both of us are gone and we're the ones that said we're going to roll it back? Two new people come in and they decide not to roll it back. Now that's a millage hike on everybody in this county.
That's why I think what you were talking to about that they're paying their lion's share of the taxes. I exactly agree with what you say because if we go to the T-Splash, everybody, the people that got COVA, the people that live in million-dollar homes, the people living in twenty thousand dollar trailers, they're all going to pay their fair share and the amount of that one cent extra is not that much compared to putting a tax burden on everybody.
I had a guy that I showed the property for who has a, was asking a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars for his house on twelve acres. He was there the day that I showed it. He explained to the buyer, oh, you know, the best part about this is my tax bill is seventy-eight dollars a year. Okay? All right, timeout for a second. Think about that. I'm on the COVA. My tax bill is seventy-eight dollars a year and he's asking one thirty-five for his house. Meanwhile, he's probably got two-point-two children, right? Who've gone to public schools where we're paying eight to ten thousand dollars a year to educate their children. Not to mention any services for, you know, we're now funding the hospital, EMS, fire. And what if he has a fire and the guys have to go out and put the fire out? I mean, all these services that, you know, that we're offering, the tag office, the library, I mean, for seventy-eight dollars a year? So that's not who the tax burden is going to fall on if we raise the millage rate. Okay? It's really not. And again, I know I sound selfish and, but I am, I was voted to represent a group of people. And I'm sorry, but you know, the houses on one or two acres are tired of footing the bill for this county. And you know, if we don't pass the T-Splash, we need to just pare it down. We're a rural county. We can't offer the same services as Bibb County. Why try? Cut it somewhere else. Find something else to cut it, you know, and to pay for it and, you know, that's where I'm at. And put it on the department heads. Sorry, your department needs to cut twenty-five percent this year. You don't even have to do it. Just tell them to do it. You know, that's where I'm at.
But to think about it, I get these questions. Why do we need to raise, why do we need T-Splats? Just take all the money we already get. People don't understand what the cost has gone up over the last few years. We've asked every department the last few years to cut ten percent out of everything. We've had to give, we've given raises to EMS, to Sheriff's Department. The cost of everything we do, everybody sees it out there. Everything you've got is costing more and more. So the money we've got coming in, the lion's share goes to the Board of Education. The rest have come to us. We can only cut so much. And like Commissioner Mommy said, even if we close the rec club, close the library, close these.
Quit funding the hospital. Do you want roads or do you want a hospital?
We still wouldn't have enough money to do what we need to do if we closed all the services.
You know, you got to cut somewhere. I mean, you know, we all do it within our personal lives every single day. You live within your means. You know, we all want something that we can't afford today. Well, this county has been enjoying the benefit of a long-term tax on our roads. At some point, a previous administration decided we're not going to fund the road system in Monroe County in an adequate amount to keep up with the roads. And we're now bearing the consequence of that. Well, you know, it's time to make a tough decision, gentlemen. You know, at some point, you know, and to me, I'm not okay with another tax. God dang it, I'm not going to vote. I told my constituents when I ran for office, I was not going to vote for a tax increase. I told my constituents, when I ran for office, I was not gonna vote for a tax increase. And I'll be damned if I'm gonna break that promise. I'm done.
Any more to go, Commissioner Rowe?
Oh, that was good. That was good.
I won't argue with anything that George said. Other than one thing I just want to clarify. If you own fifteen acres, which I do, and the tax bill, you pay for two acres in your house, you pay property tax just like anyone else has two acres in a house. And then the thirteen acres are in COVA. It's not the entire fifteen acres. It was that way, but it's been changed. So there is, there is a little bit of a difference there. And I know it affects a lot of people in my district, but they do cut your house of two acres out. You pay, Jeff, are you with the, you in COVA? But anyway, I know a lot of people in our, in our area. That's, that's how they, they did that. Just one thing, just off to the side. The list that we have, and I just wanna go with this real quick. Every time we have this meeting, every time we generate this list, I get a phone call that first twenty-four and forty-eight hours, my road was not on that list. And Jim, I'm to correct me if I'm wrong when I, once I've been in there. The list is a required guide. It's not the final bible as to what would be paid to the, to the exact mile. We have to have this guideline to even go through with the, with the T-Sploß, to go through with the record.
You have to have a list of projects.
Yes, yes, but it is, but, but some of those may be reduced. Some of them may be added. Things change. Roads are, are all the things. When we have, and Junior, you and I were discussing one just recently. When you have an area that's quickly being developed, then the road deteriorates much quicker. And it may have to be moved up on the list. And when you have log trucks in an area, that can quickly deteriorate road. And, and some of these roads may say five miles, and we may look at it and say, we don't need the whole five miles. We can do three miles, and that gives two miles worth of money to go to another area. So just, I just wanted to say that because somebody's gonna call me and say, my road wasn't on there. And I'm just letting you know that, that, that thing, that the list can be fluid. We can move.
And the thing about, we don't even have to list roads. All you've got to list is projects. The project would be road resurfacing and stuff like that. We're just trying to help the people out, see how Junior and them have coordinated these roads, what, what state of repair or need of repair they've got on them. Like I said, it changes every day.
It was just for discussion, Rick.
It's just discussion. But I believe our county attorney said, how did you, did we stand on that question? We can support it, but we can't advertise it.
You can inform, but you can't advocate.
All right, moving on to item I, Macon Water Authority Contract Amendment.
We don't need a vote on that?
No, it's just a discussion. We both, uh, uh, turn it over to our county manager, Mr. Hedges at this time.
Okay, a little history here. The board approved ending Macon Water Authority contract March 2nd of this year. The amendment included receiving a twenty percent discount on the purchase of water for resale from Macon Water Authority for our new service area, which is pretty much defined as the Juliette area. And we would reset that contract, which has got forty-two years remaining back to a fifty-year term. And the final item that was added in that approval was contention on Monroe Water Authority, Macon Water Authority agreeing to a usage of up to five million gallons per day from our current two and a half million. In contacting Macon Water Authority, this goes back a number of years. We paid about two and a half million dollars for the original capacity of two and a half million. They have provided usage information for the last twenty-nine months. Macon Water Authority does not believe additional capacity is warranted at this time, which would come at a significant cost to the county. This graph shows the average monthly consumption in the blue line at the bottom, where our average daily capacity is shown at the top in the red line. Right now, we're only at twenty-seven point four percent capacity of what is allowed under our agreement. This is the average monthly consumption, and it too is at twenty-seven point four. So we've got a lot of room in the existing contract capacity to grow. The next step would be, if you want to go forward with twenty percent reduction, would be to eliminate the need to increase the daily capacity from two and a half million to five million. And the concern was the usage that could be forthcoming from the city of Forsyth. They are already included in those consumption numbers that I showed you. Might want to enter into an intergovernmental agency agreement with the city of Forsyth, establishing a limitation on their daily consumption. Mr. Vice Chairman, the recommendation is to authorize the chairman to sign the amended contract that's included in your package, extending the term to fifty years and obtaining a twenty percent discount without the need to raise the capacity limitation. Mr. Vice Chairman?
It is Commissioner Trump for.
Yep, those graphs you showed, the twenty-seven point four percent usage. And now, city's not using that much more water right now. But when we add this new Juliette into it, that our usage is gonna jump up to probably about fifty-eight, fifty-nine percent capacity. And since they annexed that sixteen hundred acres, we, they can put one or two big businesses up there that consume a lot of water and win our capacity. We have got a two and a half billion gallon per day capacity, but yet we signed an agreement with them. I didn't sign. I didn't know nothing about it. But down at that Bun Road, there's no limit how much they can draw. And that draw that they're getting is part of our capacity. They can draw, they can draw from this new property up there. They can draw three million gallons a day. And then we ain't got any water left unless we go through some kind of act of God with Monroe County Water, I mean, Macon Water. And so there's gotta be a way. We gotta cut the city off. We gotta cut them off at Bun Road because they're gonna feed that new property up there. And it's hard to tell what kind of businesses and things they're gonna put up there. We've got to make sure we've got the water capacity for our citizens. And that, you see right there, that's a quarter of our capacity right now. And what we're gonna put in there is gonna be a lot more than what we already have on this new project to win. So we don't have the water to give them, or they can come back and have an intergovernmental agreement. We've got to put a capacity limit on that Bun Road connection. And that's why, I, like before, everybody on the board had to sign a contract. So you knew what was going on. When one man signs a contract, if we miss it, you don't even know what's, what's happened. I'd rather have five eyes looking for mistakes than one eye. I just, that was a bad, bad deal there on that water at Bun Road. And, and I think to go to five million gallons to give us that much water every morning, a pretty good amount of money, didn't it?
They have not mentioned what it would cost to go from two and a half to five.
But there's money involved in it.
There is definitely.
And I think it ought to be explained to the public, too. Going back to this forty-two year, still on the agreement, to raise it up to fifty. Macon Water Authority wants that, but it's not for our new water. It's strictly on that part they already have on the south end of the county. They, they do something. This new part of the county, that, that's ours. It's not included in that fifty-year contract. Just, that's clear.
Commissioner, I think the way the amendment is worded, it does make that new Juliette territory part of the overall fifty-year agreement.
I thought Jim told me when he was talking to Macon Water Authority about it, that it's strictly for the one, that that agreement went on start.
I think the twenty percent reduction.
Is for the Juliette only for two years.
Correct. I think that's where the difference is. I think fifty years, that's a lot.
Right, yeah. Then I wouldn't sign. Jim, didn't you tell me that that was for?
It was my understanding that the fifty-year agreement was only to the Macon Water Authority's service area.
Right, that's that south end of the county.
We need, we need to clarify that in the agreement.
Because that's, that's, that's the south end of the county where they're gonna highlight you out. Because I wouldn't sign if it's whole county.
I wouldn't either.
Let us clarify and we'll come back to you.
Yeah, I'm gonna ask him to table that and get our attorney to clarify it. Go ahead, go ahead.
Uh, Vice Chair, I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, I'm done. You can go ahead.
I was gonna mention, I had a constituent that I will leave unnamed because they, they ask for confidentiality, but they're, they're a longstanding member of this community and a pretty intelligent person and someone that follows the county pretty closely. Who recently kindly warned me that they think we are making a mistake by not having a long-term plan that allows us as a county to produce our own water. And I listened. I didn't comment. And I left the conversation. I don't, I don't like making quick judgments, but in the time that's passed since that conversation, I have wondered myself if that is something that, that we are making a, a bad decision by doing that. And, you know, right now, Bibb County has tons of water. It's good water. You know, they boast, they boast it's some of the best water in the state in terms of supply and what it is. And I agree with that. However, they're, they're growing. And I just don't, I don't know, I mean, here's the thing. We are growing, and at some point, actually, I think we're already growing at, at a much faster rate than Bibb County. Now that I think about it, in fact, only a couple of years ago, their, their, their numbers were going down. And I, I know we're like ten times more new construction than they have right now. So I just, I just wonder, you know, and looking long, long term, I mean, you know, there's, there's counties in Atlanta right now where you'd have to spend thirty thousand dollars an acre to buy land for a reservoir. Right now, land prices in Monroe County are still fairly reasonable. And I'm, I'm wondering if this person's warning is not, you know, something that we ought to really think about in terms of like a long, long-term plan? Like based on how many people we think Monroe County will have at some point down the road? And are we pigeonholing ourselves into, you know, a problem in the future? So my, my thoughts are, you know, I'd like, I mean, I know it's gonna cost money and we would have to borrow to do it, but I don't, you know, I don't know that it would ever get any cheaper. You know, at some point down the road, we'll, we'll be looking at twenty and thirty thousand dollar an acre prices. And when you're trying to buy something like that, you know, it could be very difficult. So.
That's, that's why I would be opposed to that fifty-year agreement. It covers all the counties. It just covers that south end. Eventually, once we get our water lines put in, we need to look, because like you said, if we produce our own water, and it'll help, we, you know, hopefully we use High Falls. Because they did a study about fifteen years ago, I believe it was, Junior? And they found the only place Monroe County put a good reservoir was out there where we put the landfill. I don't know where.
That's the only place in a four hundred square, square mile radius?
That's one they found in Canada that would beat the spec to put a reservoir. Unless we could somehow get into that watershed up there out on Brent Road or High Falls, get some water out of the river. Maybe someday we can purify a lake share unless you live like you live.
Well, wouldn't that be something?
Yeah. They'd purify straight sewage, make drinking water out, so that'll be a way to do it.
I just wanted to pass along this morning, I felt like it came from.
It's a good one.
It came, it came from somebody I really respect and who I know is not a short-term thinker and who I feel like genuinely had the county's interest in mind when he told me this. And so, like I said, I, you know, I'd like for y'all to at least mull it over and think about it before we sign. Because we're, we're down to forty-three years right now, Ben?
Forty-two.
Forty-two. It's just for that south end.
Fifty years is a long time.
It's just that south end now.
I know, but still.
You have forty, well, you, if you got forty-two years left on it, another eighty-five or that one. But we just can't do it on this new water.
Commissioner Rowe, you had something?
Yeah, I've, I've done a lot of, spent a lot of time with engineers looking at the flat mill. And it's, I mean, it's just, here's, here's the, here's the feeling that I got overall after talking with engineers. Looking at what, what we would have to do to get draw permits. Generally, the feeling that I get is from a level of government that's higher than ours is, is that the powers that be would like Macon to be the regional water producer. And that's from a higher government than ours is. And not, because I feel like all the money is going to that. You know, I don't, how many, what, thirty million dollars, I guess, to produce that? And it is, it, it just continuously tells me that, that people are, people in state government less and less, or federal government, less and less interested in little individual pockets of water producers. And they would rather have one regional water producer. That's just, that's just food for thought. And if you're battling something that's, that's, you know, got the ability to push a lot of money to one place, then it's, it's gonna be tough to balance that out. But just, that's just another thing to mull over when you, when you mull over what George said. It's, it's, that's just a general feeling that I'm, I'm getting. Is that, you know, the, the state government, the higher governments are looking for municipal, larger area water services. And, and water's obviously federally important, and water quality is, is of utmost importance. And I think that, I think that, you know, that's being looked at pretty heavily in our state.
And one thing we might want to mull over, too. We get this new system off the top, we're gonna have over half of our capacity of daily water usage. And you gotta look at that stuff, you know, you hate that, but look at that property they just annexed in. They, they bypassed this county because they're wanting to put stuff up there that we wouldn't let them put up there. And there's no limit to how much water they can draw on Bun Road. They could easily exceed our two and a half million gallons. Then who's gonna suffer? We need to renegotiate that Bun Road if it's possible. I read that contract two or three times. And I hated that we didn't all at that time have a copy of that.
But we can reinforce that to our government. But we can address it with that.
I don't, I've read it. I'll just see where we can get out of it unless Ben can come up with something. But that was a poor contract.
Okay, so at this time, we're, we're on table, and Ben's gonna go back and look at it. We'll put it on agenda for the next meeting. Okay, at this time, we're gonna move on to item J, Code Red clarification. We'll call up our prior chief, Matt Jackson, and PR Richard Dooms at this time.
All right, I think it's about hot enough for me.
He's gonna raise that one.
Uh, we've been on this Code Red emergency alert system, I think about nine months now. We started last July. And in some aspects, it's been pretty successful. And in some aspects, it's been pretty successful. We've been able to zero in on certain parts of the community when there's a water main break and bull, water notices and that kind of thing. Which is really the purpose of us getting it, was to be able to, when we had alerts, not have to, uh, alert people in Bolinbrook about an issue that pertains to High Falls or something, we can zero in on exactly what we want to use for. Where we haven't been quite as successful is on these, uh, weather alerts. And I think initially, when we, when we took this thing on last July, um, Matt and I were under the impression that those numbers that transferred over from the previous system, that all you'd have to do is if you were already in it, we would manually move it over this, this people, and they would immediately start getting those alerts. Well, we found out a few weeks after that, after we'd kind of done some of the publicity on it, that you have to actually register your name within the Code Red system to receive the National Weather Service alerts. Now, anyone who's been moved over is already getting the alerts that he and I send out from us, and that they're still getting them. But they're not getting the instantaneous, uh, thunderstorm warnings or tornado warnings or the kind of things that the National Weather Service can send out quicker than we can. So what we're trying to do is, uh, boost interest in people signing up enrollment for that, for the, uh, weather service alerts. Because those are the kinds of things, I'm sure y'all have been getting phone calls, and people saying they're getting their notifications late. When Matt or I send it out, we have to cycle through the whole system, and, you know, it dials, I think we have, what, twenty-five thousand numbers, I think?
Uh, we redial, we have about fourteen thousand, uh, close to fifteen thousand numbers, and it's calling out a thousand numbers a minute.
So, not fourteen thousand of the ones they're actually receiving, I believe. So there's, they're actually still dialing, some numbers that we haven't been able to purge from the system yet, they're no longer in use. But let's say we send out fourteen thousand, that's fourteen minutes to get around to it. Uh, I think the thunderstorm we had on March twenty-eighth that we, we had a lot of people complaining about, uh, what the alert came out, I think about one forty-eight or something for a two fifteen, uh, closing time. When he sent it out at one forty-eight, some people weren't getting it until two-ten, two, you know, twelve, whatever, by the time it gets to them. I was one of the people that time that got it early. There's been others where I'm one of the last ones, and I'm worried we didn't send anything out. And it turns out I'm just on the end of the cycle. So we need to really push the information and the word out, that people still have to enroll themselves to get the National Weather Service alerts. Because that's the only way they can guarantee that they're gonna notify the second an alert comes in, especially if a tornado is on the ground. I mean, that's the kind of thing, he and I have been pretty good during the daytime, especially here in the week when we're here. We can alert people in advance, they have to be watching, monitoring the whole time. Where it gets tricky is we've had a lot of storms overnight recently, and, uh, you know, he lives outside of the county, I live really close to the county line, so I don't know what's going on on the north end necessarily. And so I'm relying, I don't have a doppa radar in my house, so I'm relying on, uh, local news, uh, on TV as well as what the weather service is emailing out and sending to us. So it's hard for us to get the, the information to people as quickly as we need to, as quickly as the National Weather Service is capable of. Well, out of the twenty-eight thousand almost people that live in Monroe County, we have about thirteen-hundred-and-fifty that are on the National Weather Service alerts. Now, that number may have gone up a little bit since we, uh, the last time we had a potential storm, he and I made sure to put in the message how to sign up again. We might have gone up by fifty or sixty or something like that. If you're still talking fourteen hundred, about right now, they're getting the Weather Service alerts. Uh, we need that number to go up, so he and I are gonna start a publicity drive again. Uh, I don't want people to think that we were, that we, we weren't thinking about this to begin with, but I think we're just under the impression that when those numbers transferred over, that would take care of the Weather Service stuff too, and it didn't. So we're gonna start publicizing it. What I need from you guys is when we put stuff on the EMA page or board of commissioners about Code Red, can y'all share it to your followers on, uh, Facebook and Twitter, that kind of thing as well? And Christina Bramlett, who's our part-time PIO for the fire service, she's been doing a great job. She's gonna write a story, I think, put in the report about this. She's been doing a regular feature on, uh, Fire Matters. I think she did a Danny Adams story recently.
Jack.
Jackie Adams, that's right. And, uh, and she's, uh, been featuring some, uh, some locals, so that'll be something that she can do to get that word out a little bit to a wider audience. But do y'all have any other suggestions?
Yeah, maybe this young lady back here in the back can do a story on it. Or, and I'd also get to the, uh, I don't know, I mean, I know there's some Monroe Countyans that take the telegraph. For those who might just see if they'd be willing to do a free, you know, public service announcement for us, but, uh, but I'd be happy to share, uh, you know, on Facebook, and if we need to, um, I, I mean, I've got a little discretionary. If we needed to do a pay Facebook push out or something, you know, on it to, to the re, to the region. I don't know if you can select just the county, but, um, for a couple hundred bucks, it'd go a long ways, you know, to, to get that out there on, you know, on that media platform.
I wanted y'all to have the proper information of what's going on, so when y'all get questions, and people say we got our notification late, you might be getting your notification from Matt and I late. That may not be something we can control because of the speed of our system, but they can control it themselves by signing up on Code Red, so monroecodega.org. You click on the link in the bottom right corner or go to the EMA page, and it's right there. It's easy to sign up. You can get it however you want the alerts. There's various ways, text, email, I think those are even better for me, but other people can do it differently. Phone call, however you want to do it. And, uh, and even the types of alerts you receive, if you don't want flash flood or something, that you don't think that's gonna affect you, you don't have to sign up for it.
Also on that Code Red, isn't it supposed to be more detailed into certain areas that this wide coverage is used to get for Old County?
Yes, sir. With the, uh, weather alerts, as opposed to, uh, sending that out for the entire county, it goes with the tetrahedron, uh, with the, um, at the National Weather Service.
See, that's something that we need to get out to them. Because they're used to the old way. If they had a storm coming through Monroe County, you got a storm from Monroe County. It didn't say the southwest corner, the northeast corner. So they, a lot of them write, hey, we didn't get a notification. Or, you know, well, no, they're not gonna get it. If the storm was projected to go through the northwest corner of Monroe County, go down the southeast part of county, they're not gonna get it down to Code Red, and they're too used to the other way. But I'd much rather this, this spot area do it instead of just, you know, keep going off Old County.
That's, that's a good point. I want to give you an example, the opposite of that. On, uh, New Year's Day, we had a tornado on the ground come through here, and I took out a trailer, I believe, from the duvet area. But, uh, I was sitting in my house trying to get alerts from him and from TV and so forth, and I'm sitting there, and I have a choice of how to map where the storm's coming. Well, I don't want to alert people in High Falls that might not be getting the storm to panic and so forth. But I'm also not a weather expert on where a tornado is gonna turn. So if you're talking, I don't remember that one, it said it either for Forsyth or Bolinbrook from what I was hearing on television. Well, I, I just, I just made as wide a cone as I possibly could, because it's probably going to SMAR, it's between Forsyth and Bolinbrook. But if I'm wrong, and people aren't gonna get that alert and don't know to protect themselves, I'd rather err on the side of as many people as possible, get those kind of alerts. And if somebody who's manually drawn that map, it's, it's time-consuming to zoom in exactly where you want it. Now, it's a lot easier for a main break or something where I've got ten minutes to figure out exactly whose homes are in there. But if I've got a tornado, I'm just gonna put it out to who I can. So I see both sides of what you have.
So, and there again, even with the tornado warnings, that's why it's so important for us to get people to register into the National Weather Service, because there again, that follows the people that are in that actual tornado warning area from the National Weather Service. And it'll alert those people who are in that exact area as well, uh, as opposed to us trying to send it out and, you know, taking a minute.
And they also need to know that just because they sign up their cell phone, their home phone is not gonna go off. And they can also sign up, correct or wrong, but they sign up their cell phone to get a call or a text.
Yes, sir. They can decide how they want to receive the message, whether it's text message, email, phone call. Uh, they can also decide what they want to be alerted on, whether it's a warning or a, um, a watch. And they have the choice between tornado, thunderstorm, and flash floods.
I like the text because a lot of parts of Monroe County Verizon won't work for making a phone call. But yet you can get a text about anywhere in the county.
The, the text messages work much faster. Uh, some of the problems that we've had with phone calls is going through our, our infrastructure with the telephone calls on the, the hard lines.
We appreciate y'all's good information.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. At this time, uh, we're in the public comment. Before going there, uh, our rapid text recording is time, if you want me to let you know about, you know, talking back about T-Squad. We had over twenty teams in this weekend, traveling more than two hours away in the tournament. So the tournament's picking back up out there, and there again, that can help pave for some of these roads in this town.
Soccer too. Soccer had a, uh, regional, we had the regional, uh, middle school, boys and girls, uh, playoffs at Mary Curdens. And a lot of people from all over the place came in, so.
They could be helping us pave our roads.
That's a great way to make some money. When they do the fireworks out there, the cities are gonna do all the fireworks out there at the Remake Club. Let's hit all the cars, come in ten bucks a hit. Let's see if they pay it forward. We're just trying to pray always to make money.
At this time, uh, we're in the public comment. We have anyone in the audience that would like to make a comment at this time? Mr. Evans?
Good morning, border conditioners.
Morning.
Morning.
Uh, last two, a true servant of Monroe County Dad, Mr. Ralph Nix. Ralph Nix was the executive director of the Regional Development Commission for many years. Uh, he was assistant director, way back in the eighties and whatnot, not seriously long that way, eighty-seven to sometime over in the nineties. And Ralph Nix, uh, was a true servant to Monroe County. Uh, he worked with us, uh, uh, on many grants. I worked with him on at least eight grants that we got, that totaled around five million dollars, grant applications. He was a very detail-oriented person, highly intelligent, and he was really devoted to Monroe County. He represented all eleven counties in our area, from, uh, Putnam County down to Pulaski County. He worked hard at all of them. He had a particular love for Monroe County, and he was buried here last track at Monroe Hills. But he was a person that you could count on, and he really worked hard. The greatest disaster during my lifetime here in Monroe County was the flood of ninety-four. And he worked hand in hand for us to recover from that particular flood. It is mentioned in his obituary here, but he had many, many accomplishments. But he was truly a servant for this county. I would like for the board to just place a, uh, longest obituary in the minutes and possibly send special thanks to his family for his service to Monroe County. He really, really helped this county. I'm a witness to it for many, many years. He, he's somebody special. And I just want to address a couple of things that were said in the meeting. I want to go to Commissioner Mommy's point about the taxes. Uh, uh, when the developer of River Forest brought to us and told us he was going to develop River Forest, that, uh, the main point that he brought to us was that it was going to be basically independent of Monroe County. In other words, we were not going to have to, to, to develop the road, we were not going to have to maintain the road, we were not going to have to install the water lines. He was gonna put a water tower up there, and was gonna work with the city. And I believe the residents, in order to tap on to the water line, at that particular time, I believe it was thirty-five or a hundred dollars per resident to tap on to cover that. But he said, uh, this was the first gated community in Monroe County. And he said it would be no cost to the county, that it would all of this support itself. And at that particular time, there were a lot of people that weren't receptive to that particular idea. I was. I was receptive because it was going to build a lot of high-end houses up there. And the, and the lots at that particular time, I believe, started at seventy-five thousand dollars per acre in the first stage of that. But it was going to be independent. I joined as soon as they opened up the club and everything, and that was important. And that was one of the things that we're not going to worry about, you know, you supported us, we're gonna support the county. So that was the idea. Since that time, we've got a couple of other gated communities in this group, assist communities. And, uh, on the, on the line of water, we could not produce the water here in Monroe County. So we had to go to big county. And we got a grant to run the water up to the rest area. That was a big plant to get this thing. So we brought it on up to, to, uh, Johnsonville, Johnsonville Rumble Road, and that was it. As far as looking at the studies on, uh, developing the plant down at, uh, Plant Comedia, we bought it for seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We've had several studies that you can reach back to in the notes and see. They may be unweighted now, but the cheapest one we got for developing that plant and tapping into our nearest water line about ten years ago, or something like fifteen million dollars. And I think when you kind of look at the expenses that you already encountered, sixteen billion dollars for the Juve Water Project, you just bonded another five million dollars for, for upgrading buildings and what have you. I'm thinking that the county may have already overextended. You won't have enough money to pay your debt service, you know? So it's gonna have to take some steps. But that, that was the idea. Perhaps that one would, you got a permit, you still got an inactive permit out there for the plant, a five million, five million gallons withdrawal. It can be reactivated, certainly can, but it's gonna take a lot of money. And to get out of that fifty-year contract will not be easy. And big county, I know people, challenge of, of plans of mine for the last sixty years, challenge, they've always indicated they would work with this county and sell enough water. They've got funds. But thank you all. Thank you for your service.
What did you want us to do with that?
Can you give us a copy of that?
Oh, yeah, I'm giving it to, yeah, just put in the man, please.
Okay, no problem.
I can do that.
Thank you.
Anybody have a question about water policy?
Thank you for the information.
I appreciate it. Can we get a ladder too?
I can too. Anyone else in the, out of the audience have any public comments?
Now, y'all need to just sit here without having something on your mind.
Donald Wright it this week, that's okay. He won't get up.
I don't know how to express words from my mind, and I'm outside looking in, you know?
I'd, I'd love to have Chief Jackson on that little video segment talking about how to do the Code Red. If you and Will let, let him do that, I think that would help a lot, if he wants to.
Have you had any comments, whether or not these new mics help them build ears?
Uh, I haven't gotten any yet, but, um, I sent Andre in to check some of the police computer in there, and she said it sounded good.
Nobody's fussing if they can't hear.
No one has said anything at this point, so. Between eight and seventeen or eighteen viewers, pretty much all of them.
God bless them.
Also, Richard, can you, uh, put it on our commission Facebook page, how, how people can sign up for that Code Red, put their information out there also?
Yeah, sure.
All right, I appreciate it. Thank you. No, if any, no one else had any public comments, I would like, uh, entertain a motion to go in our executive session.
But before we do that, I just want to say, uh, that Vice Chairman, you've done a great job handling the meeting today, and our chairman's out, thank you.
You really did.
Thank you, thank you.
Good coaching.
I'll, I'll, I'll motion to adjourn. Or go into executive.
I think our attorney has something for it.
Just, I was gonna add for the purpose of litigation.
For litigation.
I would like to say one thing before we go into it. We've got a deadline right now on Fridays, and we've gotta have our stuff in if we want to be on the agenda. That means Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday. We can't say anything. And I feel that at the bottom of this meeting, there should be a place for District One, Two, Three, Four, if you have any, and the county, and Commissioner Chairman, because a lot happens in those four or five days, and I can't bring it up in here, bring it in here. We've gotta wait another two, two and a half weeks before we take action on it. A lot of stuff requires immediate action. I would like to put in the future that at the bottom of our agenda here, that there's a commissioner's, we're not gonna bring any hand grenades in or something like that. I mean, nothing is, there's things that happen out there, and you can't wait that three or four weeks that come up emergencies. And I would like to see what the board's thought is on that. I know our Commissioner Chairman doesn't like that, but, uh, I think it's a necessary, I'd still agree with- with a Friday, if the public wants to be on the agenda so we can research what they want. But as far as the commissioner, I think we should be able to have something to say at each meeting.
Commissioner Monroe, you got something on that?
I mean, I think that the reason we've steered away from it has been just, I mean, there are times where if you bring something up and staff or commissioners haven't had a chance to prepare, you know, it, nobody likes sitting here and going, you know, and not having a clue about how to respond to something. But, so, I mean, as long as we were all gentlemanly agreeing to not throw hand grenades, as we say, you know, where you just blow the whole room up.
Take, for example, you come up with something for your discretionary fund you need, you don't want to wait that two or three weeks to get it.
I mean, I think if we try, if we did it on, on a trial basis to make sure that everybody could, could do it and be, be fair to one another and to the staff, you know, I think I'd be for that. But again, I mean, the first, the first time that we start, you know, it turns into, you know, something that's embarrassing for the staff or anybody else, I think we, yeah, I, I, you know me, man, I can talk, so.
They've got plenty of comments. I think we'll have a comment too.
I talk too much already for this.
Commissioner Rove, you have anything on that?
I don't know.
He, you don't talk hardly at all. I talk to both of us.
I listen a lot about that.
But when he does get warmed up and gets tired.
That's true. He can get fired up.
Okay, what do we need to make?
Make a motion, we go into executive session for litigation. We need real estate on that too?
Not for my purposes.
Okay. Okay, I've been motioned by Commissioner Ambrose and seconded by Commissioner Rove that we go into executive session at this time.